City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded October 21st, 2024.
At 7 o'clock, we'll call the regular Common Council Meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Here.
Guthrie.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Broderick.
Here.
Burris, excuse, Steinmetz.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Chuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Uzi.
Here.
Marlowe.
Here.
And we do have a quorum, and please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have a couple of opening remarks, comments more so. The first thing I would like to do, and I didn't even warn him, I'd like to introduce you to our new Community Development Director, Jared Kivela, who's in the back. Jared, you want to stand up and say hi?
Do you want to go to the podium?
No. And John will tell you that's a lectern, not a podium.
Hello, everyone. Thank you.
Give them at least another week before you start bombarding them with stuff. The operational budget for the City of Stevens Point is set at a special Finance Committee meeting, which will be held October 28th at 6:00 PM in this very room. So that will be available for your perusal, middle of next week, probably, I'm sorry, middle of this week, Wednesday or Thursday at the latest. And then Cory will give his presentation, along with myself, to the Finance Committee on the 28th. In-person early voting starts tomorrow at City Hall. So you are able to do that and contact the Clerk's office. We will be in the City Hall conference room, which is right across from the Comptroller or Treasurer's Office. So if you pay your taxes in person, it's just right across the hall. And I guess it's a celebration. This week, we'll see the retirement of Pastor Dave Ficken, who has served with the Pastoral Program for Emergency Services, the Police Department, for 17 years. Is that correct, Chief? So we thank him not only for his service, but wish him well in the future. With that, I will move on. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item. Other than a public hearing, must register the request at this time. Those who wish to address the council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. We do have a couple of public hearings, but if you would like to speak on any of those other topics, I would encourage you to register. Anybody that wants to speak on a topic that didn't fill one of these out? Think we're okay then? All right. Then we'll move on to item number four. Item number four is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. Jen Burton.
Jen Burton, 5718 Sandpiper Drive, Stevens Point. I have two things to share tonight. The first one has to do with the former Shopko site. The city has begun the process of redeveloping this site. I went to a really cool presentation a while ago that showed some of the concepts that they're considering. It was helpful to see some ideas on paper, so I could visualize how the site would be developed. How exciting it is to see an updated transit center mixed development with retail and a variety of housing, and a green space with a possible performance area. Thank you to the city planners. Chris, I'm talking to you. And others who did this such a good job of putting the information together and sharing it with the community. As this project goes forward, I have some suggestions. It's imperative to include some public bathrooms in this space. If I go downtown to sit and listen to a small concert in the green space, I would like to feel free to stay there without worrying about my needs. I can't walk long distances, so it would also be helpful to have, I forgot, oh yeah, have some benches there, so I could relax and rest and not feel like I had to tear away. Another useful amenity, oh, I just said that, benches. These two amenities, the bathrooms and the benches, would encourage folks to come and stroll and feel free to be part of vibrant space. It's already developing that way. The second thing I wanted to share is a story about my experience with the working poor. I'm a volunteer with Laundry Love. It's a ministry supported by funds from volunteers from six churches. I go once or twice a month for a two- or three-hour shift and work with volunteers. And these people that we work with, we call them neighbors. And anyway, you'll hear more about that in a sec. After a year of working with them, I have come to know some of them. One neighbor last week said, "If only I had money for a down payment from our own place, we could get an apartment." She didn't want a handout, she wanted a hand up. Another time, a woman came with three bags of laundry, and she was sweaty and tired. She said she had just returned from having surgery and needed to do her laundry. This happened to be 10 minutes before we closed the shifts. We all chipped in to help out, including some folks that were just there doing their own laundry. We all pitched in. She kept saying, "I'm so happy that you're here for me. You're helping me out." And I just said, "We're here for you. That's why we do this." I share these two stories because it's important to treat the less fortunate among us with respect and dignity. I used to walk past people in the streets who looked poor and unkempt. I was afraid to make eye contact. Now, I recognize some of my neighbors when I go through the streets, and I look them in the eye and I greet them. I no longer call them those people. They are my neighbors, and each one has a name and a story. As the city goes forward with redevelopment and development projects, please keep all of our neighbors in mind. The extent to which we treat the least of us measures our value as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. You've got a wonderful heart.
Thank you.
That exhausts our speakers for non-agenda items. We do have two presentations tonight, the first of which we have been talking about for several years, and that is the necessitation or desire to remodel the current county city building and use it all for the courthouse, to check off some of the boxes that the county needs. And that would require the city moving out. Of course, the council knows about this, but we just wanted to get some other perspectives. So joining us tonight, we have County Executive John Pavelski, our County Board Chairman Ray Reiser, Circuit Court Judge Trish Baker, and our Facilities Superintendent Todd Neufeld. The floor is yours. Just to clarify this, we're not looking for any action. This is a presentation, just to make sure that everybody understands not only the city perspective, but the county perspective.
Thank you so much, Mayor Weesa, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. We're here today to update you on the progress of a potential courthouse project and ask for your support. As many of you know, the county's been considering building a courthouse for probably close to 20 years. Built in 1957 and 1959, the county city building houses both the Portage County and City Stevens Point offices. The building has come to the end of its functional use in keeping up with the societal changes over the years, and it is in need of many renovations. In keeping up with the agreement of retaining the courthouse downtown, the county has looked at options to fulfill that promise. Portage County has looked at potential new construction in comparison to remodeling the existing courthouse. While the exterior structure of the building remains in excellent condition, there are major remodel needs to the interior portion of the building. Windows, electrical, HVAC, plumbing, flooring, lighting, security upgrades are all needed. Plans to utilize the basement space by relocating certain offices creates interdepartmental efficiencies and better working environments for the employees. It has been discovered through the architectural assessment, if remodeled, the current courthouse will provide Portage County with a modern, more efficient, safe, secure, better functioning facility with future growth capabilities for a fourth courtroom. Remodel would serve the community and its residents and employees for many years to come. In order to proceed with this project, the county would have to use the 27% of space currently occupied by the city. By remodeling the current building, the taxpayers would save in the vicinity of about $40 million in comparison to building new. In communicating with Mayor Weesa and understanding some of the needs of the city, I believe it would be prudent for the city, instead of paying for the remodeling of your current office space, use the money to purchase the building or a location which would provide adequate space for the city operational needs now and into the future. We greatly appreciate for the working relationship we have with the city in the past, and we want to keep on collaboration in the future. Again, like Mayor Weesa said, with us tonight is Head Judge Patricia Baker. She can address any concerns as far as the security plans for the courthouse and also its operations. County Board Chair Ray Reiser is here to give you a timeline as far as what decisions have been made, what decisions currently has to be made. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take questions right now, or we can take all the questions at the end, whatever you prefer.
What I would prefer, John, is if we're going to discuss it, because presentations, we typically don't do question and answer, but if there is a discussion item that's needed, maybe we can put it on our next agenda. Or they can contact your office outside of the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Good evening, council. I'm Ray Reiser, your current County Board Chair, and I'm going to echo a few of the things that John covered this evening. For the last six months, Mayor Weesa, Executive Pavelski, myself, Todd Neufeld, Judge Baker, we've been looking at the options for remodeling the courthouse. And we've been looking basically at the need to do some long-delayed maintenance on the entire building, and also the fact that we actually need all of the square footage within the current courthouse building. We've been working closely with the city. I think we're at a point where the city is considering vacating that building and looking at other options. That would be critical for us in terms of moving ahead. I'll defer to our Facility Manager, Todd Neufeld, but we're probably looking at at least a two-year timeline in terms of design work and moving ahead, but we really need a commitment from the city to take the next steps. We need to spend money on that design work, and we don't really want to move ahead unless we know we have an agreement. And I think we are to a point where we have at least a verbal agreement to look at the options in front of us. As Executive Pavelski said, we've looked at building a new courthouse. Current costs are estimated at about $80 million, and that would be a smaller facility than we currently have with the current courthouse. So we're looking at a remodel project that might run somewhere in the neighborhood of $35 to $40 million. That's a pretty big savings for both the city and the county. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So when there is a race, the last one that comes up, I think is called a sweeper. So maybe that's what my role tonight.
The closer.
The closer. No, I don't know about the closer. I'm not sure I'm going to hold that position. I want to say, first of all, thank you for inviting us, and very, very happy to be here. And I would love to take questions when we are done, but I know that's not on the agenda. So if any of you, I invite any of you to pick up the phone and call myself, or call County Board Chair Ray Reiser, or call County Executive Pavelski, or Todd Neufeld, our Facilities Director. Todd can give you all the nuts and bolts, and I can probably give you the higher-end stuff, and the two of them can tell you how it all comes together. You know, I wanted to start off by making just a couple of really nice comments about being invited to be here and working together. As some of you may know, I've been involved in county government for, boy, 20 years, long time, something like that. And I have, what I can say right now is that I feel like we have a level of cooperation that's been kind of unmatched, and I'm really enjoying that and appreciating it. And I just wanted to come up here and, first of all, acknowledge that, that that's a really nice position to be in. But that having been said, I'm also going to deliver the message that, as carefully as I can, we'd really like you out. And I'll say, I'll tell you a couple of reasons why, but I got to say that as gingerly and as carefully as I can, picking and choosing my words well. We, I will tell you, first of all, all of the judges join me in this position, maybe not in some of my juicier comments, but in the underlying sentiment that we are, I'll tell you, first of all, the judges would love to have a new courthouse. We would, that'd be just fabulous. We'd love to have a new courthouse. But as you all may recall, and some of you that have been in government as long as I have, and as long as Todd knows, we're not going that way. We think that we have an agreement on remodeling the courthouse. And while that doesn't give us a shiny new courthouse that all the judges would love to have, we do feel really confident with the architects that we've been working with, that we can remodel the courthouse, and we can accomplish the needs for our taxpayers, our citizens, our litigants, the people that use the courthouse. We feel like we can accomplish those things for a pretty reasonable price tag, if you consider $40 million reasonable, I guess, right? I will tell you, first of all, that we need a fourth branch. We have three Circuit Court judges. We have one about 75% family court commissioner. We have enough work. We actually have more work than what Wood County has had, but we have been passed over, for example, for an additional branch. The branches are, because we are state employees, the branches are determined by our state legislature and by the court system, the state court system, and we have been passed over for a fourth branch, because we literally didn't have enough space. If a county commits to having enough space, like, for example, they're building a new courthouse, or as Wood County did, they said, "We're building a new jail, we're building some new offices." That will free up space to make a fourth courtroom, a fourth branch, then they were awarded with what I would like to think would be, it should have been the Portage County fourth branch, but that's, you know, my thought on it. There's no basis for that, other than just me wanting to have a fourth branch. But we have the work for a fourth branch. We'd like a fourth branch. There's an old expression in legal circles, in the courts, that justice delayed is justice denied. And when you have branches that are as full, when you have courts, Circuit Courts as full as what we are, we sometimes get justices sometimes delayed because of the type of, because of the quantity of cases that we have. So that's the first thing I want to share with you, is that we very much want to have a fourth branch. For an example, I'll tell you that we are so cramped. This afternoon, I couldn't use my courtroom because a judge from Wood County was overseeing a case that involved, where the judges were actually victims. And so it got sent to an outer county judge from Wood County who was overseeing it. He was using my courtroom this afternoon. We don't have an extra courtroom to put a visiting judge. We don't have an extra place to put visiting judges, ever. It's always kind of a game, as far as finding a space game, trying to find where we can situate that visiting judge. And so that's the first thing I want to share with you, is that, first of all, as a county, we could have a fourth branch, but we've been jumped over by a number of different counties because we don't have the space. If you would be so kind as to vacate the building, say that as carefully as I can, we could remodel, and we could have a fourth branch. And that would be a visiting courtroom, or a courtroom for visiting judges until we get, until we're awarded a fourth branch. So that's the first thing I want to share with you. The second thing I want to share with you is, I know that all of us have been in the courthouse at one point or another. All of us go into the courthouse and probably have had a fairly pleasant experience, at least I hope so. But the reality is, is that we have someplace around 20,000 people that come into the courts, come into the second floor of the courthouse every year. And of those 20, it's roughly around 20,000 people. Although, we know it's actually, the number is actually more than that. It's 20,000 people that have gone through the security. Our security is part-time. We only have security when we have court in session. But people come up to the second floor of the courthouse to do filing, to pay fines, to file small claims, to file divorces. We have done passports on the second floor of the courthouse for about 15 years. So we've got lots of families coming up, and they are coming up to do those sorts of ordinary tasks that people do in courthouses. And it's all of those things, but they also are doing things that are usually challenging. We deal with people in their worst moments of life. We have jury trials, we have people coming up to serve as jurors, we have people coming up as victims in trials, we have people coming up as litigants, and we have people coming up for just every variety of action that you can think of. If they're a victim, they're going all the way down the hallway to the DA's office. I want to just talk about security for a moment, and some of the security issues that we have had in our courthouse, that we, as judges and people that work in the courts, we tend to get pretty thick-skinned about the things that happen. They tend to not affect us so much, but when I think about those 20,000 folks that came, come up to get a passport, to come up because they got a traffic ticket, come up because they want to file a small claims action, when I think about those people, and I think about these incidents, because they get unintentionally exposed to these incidents, that's where I say, you know what, we need to rethink security in our courthouse. So I want to just give you a couple of examples, of things that have occurred in the last, recent past, certainly since I've been on the bench. My first example involves our comptroller. We had a fellow banging, banging on all of the doors and windows on the second floor. He was sent downstairs to the first floor. Sheriff's deputies said, you know, "You can't behave like that up here on the second floor." And he was looking for something to do with family court. He ended up at Cory Lattick's office. What I was told is he was banging on the door and yelling obscenities and so forth. It sounds like Mr. Lattick's office very kindly sent him down to the family court commissioners. What I was told by the sheriff's deputies was that he was eventually escorted out of the building for not charged with disorderly conduct, even though that would have been appropriate. A little bit more gruesome situation took place in Wood County just not too long ago. A man was getting divorced, was very, very upset about his divorce, managed to bring in a small blade with him when he came in, when the judge was going through some of the things about the divorce and the separation of money and so forth. The man slit his throat. He didn't hurt himself permanently, other than emotional damage, but everybody in the courtroom had to deal with that. That case ultimately became mine. And it was a really tragic case, but it also, you know, expresses the idea of why we need security. We had another incident case involved, and I'm just taking cases that I'm aware of. I think the other two branches have lots of situations as well. We had homicide trial in Branch Three about a year ago, and the family, when the verdict came back, it was a very, very emotional moment, and there were a number of people involved with the defendant's family who were very, very unhappy. Most of the people had left the courthouse, but not everybody. And one of the bailiffs was in the courthouse cleaning up the jury room and was taking items back to the clerk of court's office and was accosted by these people that were very, very unhappy with the verdict. They, you know, made a lot of threatening comments, comments that were, you know, pretty inappropriate, and certainly comments that the bailiff had nothing to do with, comments about me and so forth. She ultimately, that bailiff ultimately quit. She said, "I can't work in this building. I can't be, I can't, you know, be subjected to this sort of scenario or situation again. I'm just not going to put myself in that situation." So, you know, I tell you these pretty awful things because this is what we deal with. And like I said, we as judges, people that work in the courts, we get very thick-skinned about these things. We get very, we can blow them off pretty easily. But I think about folks that come in. I told our Chair Pavelski about an incident where I had a trial verdict came back, the defendant was very, the verdict came in, the jury was still in the courtroom, everything was still very happy and graceful. The jury left, the jury foreperson came back into the courtroom. At that point, when I had to revoke the defendant's bond, and he was then sent to the jail, or he knew that he was going to be going to the jail, the foreperson for the verdict, or foreperson for the jury had come back in, and the defendant became very upset and said a lot of things, and the foreperson was in there watching that. And I, you know, I can't help but wonder how, what was his thought process in seeing this and knowing that he had been protected from this sort of situation? He had been protected as a juror, but now he's just a member of the gallery, and now he's seeing what we deal with on a regular basis. So I tell you these things because I think it's important that you, as lawmakers, and as the people that represent our constituents in the largest city in our county, that you understand that when we say we really need to improve security in our courthouse, I'm talking about your constituents, I'm talking about county constituents, talking about a lot of different people, those 20,000 people that come into the building every year and want to take advantage of our court system, but they want to do it safely, they want to be secure, they don't want to be subjected to situations where their safety might be compromised, or they might be subjected to something that they find incredibly unpleasant that they didn't anticipate. So I'll just wrap up by saying, we really need the space. If we follow through, if the county follows through with the remodel of the courthouse, we will have safe hallways for, we will have partitioned hallways where the defendants will be separated from people. Right now, I'm sure you've all seen it at one point or another, if you've been up on a busy day. We have defendants who are in cuffs and shackles being escorted down the hallway, right next to people that are coming down to, you know, fill out passports or pay a traffic fine, you know, things like that. That happens every day in the courthouse. That will be ended if we can do this remodel. The jurors being subjected, or being in the situation where they might interact with someone from a trial, that, you know, they may have just had to make a tough decision about, they will be separated, they will be segregated from those folks. We will have security, we'll have single access, single-point security in the courthouse, and it will be a much safer and much more pleasant place for all of our constituents, all of our citizens and litigants to participate in. So with that, again, I'll say, we can't have discussion tonight, but do not hesitate to pick up the phone and call me, or email me. I'm happy to do so. It may end up being after hours, but I feel very confident in saying that we'll be able to have a conversation. It might be a Sunday evening. And I also think that I can probably make that same comment for Ray Reiser and John Pavelski and Todd Neufeld as well, sorry, that we would all welcome any questions that you have. So with that, again, I say as gingerly as I can, please find a new home. Thank you so much for having us. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Todd, anything to add?
Nope, just want to make myself available if anybody needs, has any questions or anything like that.
So again, because the agenda listed as a presentation, we typically don't do Q and A. My intention would be to see if council has questions that aren't answered individually and have a discussion item on next month's agenda, if you can be here for that, to help facilitate that discussion. I think that would be appropriate. But the reason I had these people come in today and talk about this is, several of us have been involved in the discussions for many years, but we also have several new alders that probably haven't been involved with those discussions. The intention would be, and I think we're farther along, and I think you'll all agree with me, we're farther along now than I think anybody's ever been in the past, as far as getting something done. These discussions have been going on for 20 years or more in regards to the Justice Center and things like that. But what the county needs to begin their process is an assurance that the city will leave, right? We own 27% of the building, we sell it to the county, trade will leave, right? We own 27% of the building. We sell it to the county, trade it to the county, whatever, but we need an assurance that we'll be out. We have decided that we're okay with that. However, there isn't a plan to get out. So I would look to the council, and we've talked about this, making a decision on where we're going to go, that starts a clock ticking. Best guess is about 18 months for a build-out, maybe longer if it's built from scratch. That can then give the county a date certain. We don't want to say we'll be out in two years if we don't know where we're going yet. So find a place to go, and that starts that clock ticking. So 18 to 24 months after that, we'll be out. And that can start the county on their process to getting the full design done and maybe even go so far as to start some construction because their build-out is going to take just as long. This whole process, even in the best of situations, is going to be three or four years. More realistically, four or five years. But it doesn't start until that first domino falls. And we're kind of that first domino. So I know I've stressed how important a decision is to the council before. I would hope that hopefully next month or at the very least our December meeting, we would have a discussion. Staff will present to you some of the options that we've been looking at. And if that's all right, I'll have a discussion item with the county, whoever representatives you think we need, and we can do a full discussion, Q and A, and talk about that all next month. Is there any objection to that?
No.
All right, then that's what we'll do. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is part of a EPA Brownfield grant application process, and we'll invite Chris Kleissmith up. Let me bring up your PowerPoint. There's a whole lot of clicking going on. Let's see here. People are constantly changing things. All right, Chris, you're on. Maybe? Come on.
I'm ready.
It tells me you're on. We got to enable it. There we go.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Go ahead and get us started right to the next slide.
Seriously? You killing me, Smalls? I got witnesses. It's correcting my screen. What's going on here? Resume slideshow.
Halloween is coming early.
I don't get it. All right.
Don't we have someone who works, don't we have someone who works the IT?
I don't do that anymore.
You don't do the IT anymore, Mayor?
I don't do, this should be working.
Someone worked IT, I believe, on the council.
Nothing? Sorry, Chris.
No worries.
This is on me. It says it's still sharing. It's lying.
Well, sharing is caring. Maybe you just don't care enough.
Emphasis on caring. Well, that's just lovely. Now I don't even have you.
I told Chris I had to set an early alarm to bake something in the morning.
Did you turn it on and off? Enough for the peanut gallery. I know that I don't know.
I told Chris I had to set an early alarm to bake something in the morning.
Did you turn it on and off? Enough for the peanut gallery. I know that I don't know. No, I'm not even showing these as options. All right, I'm going to go back to sharing.
Detailed notes about that.
Let's try this. Why do I have two screens? It's a rhetorical question. I don't need an answer.
I don't even know how to tag somebody on Facebook much.
They can teach you.
Know that I don't know.
Technology.
They can get you on Snapchat.
And if you'd like for me to just deliver the presentation orally rather than through the slides, I can go ahead and get started.
It's personal now.
Joel, are you here to help?
No.
He's just here to smile. He's enjoying this way too much.
I'm just leaving it like this, and we're going to go through it this way.
Sounds good. Thank you, everyone, again, and thanks for your patience. Just a quick little background on the EPA Brownfield cleanup grant. The Brownfield cleanups grant really is designed to support the redevelopment of sites within our communities. In fiscal year 2025, it's estimated that about $100 million will be available, estimated to go to about 30 different projects throughout the nation, all thanks to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. As we discussed last week, $4 million is the award ceiling for the EPA Brownfields cleanup grant, and there's no match required. We are really excited to be applying for such assistance to accelerate the project downtown. The EPA Brownfields cleanup grant is, does require a full narrative, and that, the narrative for that application has been provided to you all and is available to the public. We'll go back and explain how that's accessible in a minute. But the narrative really focuses on two main things. The, the project area and the revitalization plan for that area, and then a demonstration of the community need. Those two items are really, need to link up to one another in order for us to have a strong application. The grant does have a strong emphasis on social and environmental justice, and it does require an analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. So what else the city could do with the site rather than what's being proposed in the grant's application. However, funds are most, are used most strategically when cleanup is used to prepare for specific developments, and we'll discuss that as a part of the analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. The draft application and the analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives is available at City Hall in the Community Development Department. A paper copy can be provided. If anyone in the community would like a digital copy of those two documents, they can email me at ckleismith@stephenspoint.com to submit comments, questions, considerations that we may have overlooked by November 14th, if there's any comment that needs to be made and changes, modifications to the application prior to then. So I'm going to flip the order on what the grant requires. So the revitalization plan is important, but I wanted to focus on the community need first. First and foremost, as described within our project narrative, there are three major needs that we're hoping to address with the revision or revitalization of the Shopko site. One, increasing low and moderate income housing options to support our low-income residents. This has been discussed in our most recent housing study, our recent Housing Task Force report, the Stevens Point Comprehensive Plan, and as well as referenced within our Stevens Point Strategic Plan. The other two items, enhancing community connectivity and access to public transportation and promoting downtown investment and revitalization, are strongly emphasized again in all of those planning documents. We have enough plans to tell us that this is a really high priority for us. But us and the team at StanTech have also prepared some additional data to demonstrate just how strong that community need is here in Stevens Point. So you'll find in the draft narrative a few tables indicating some of the demographic changes and data for downtown Stevens Point in particular. So in addition to population changes for the city of Stevens Point, we've been able to showcase some of the changes of population data for that specific portion of the census tract as well as the census tract itself. But the target area for that census tract has seen a significant decrease in population over the last 20 years as compared to the rest of the city of Stevens Point and the state. Our increase in poverty rate has been ahead of the rest of the city of Stevens Point in this area, as well as the state of Wisconsin, United States. It's been a pretty stark change in the overall poverty rate, but also the StanTech team wanted to emphasize the change in our percent of black and African-American population in downtown Stevens Point as well. Again, looking at our social and environmental justice efforts, Stevens Point is becoming more diverse, and our black and African-American residents are disproportionately affected or disproportionately impoverished. While that 24.4% is our overall percent poverty rate for that area, 44% of that population is impoverished, just in that census tract alone. So it's important for us to keep that in mind. We've also seen median renter income decrease over time, so it's both behind the rest of the city of Stevens Point as well as the median household income. And then in addition to that, our, we've referenced this in our Housing Task Force report quite a lot, that the housing cost burden of residents in the city has been on the, on the climb recently. When we say cost burdened, we're referencing any amount beyond 30% of your income being spent on housing. So that does include your utilities, includes your rent. It's also, in the next slide, you also show that a lot of the residents within downtown Stevens Point in the census tract, compared to the city and compared to the rest of the county, also don't own a vehicle. And it's important to keep that in mind, that our transportation costs are also not included in that last data point, but are also a fundamental cost that we all incur as residents here. Included on that other last slide, just to emphasize that majority of the households in the area are rental households, and over half of them are cost burdened in the target area. I know we discussed this last week, but as a reminder, just a little bit of background and site history, the city or a commission of the city has acquired the property since the 1980s. The city recently acquired that property, the Shopko parcel itself, in 2023 and began raising in 2024 thanks to steadfast work by you all, the redevelopment authority. We are working on the transferring ownership of the parking lot parcel to the city to make sure we are eligible for, for the grant. So for everyone else's awareness, who wasn't at our committee meetings, as a reminder to the rest of the council, we did adopt a conceptual master plan for the downtown site for Shopko, which included multiple residential units, the Transit Center and multiple mixed-use facilities with a small park incorporated. Staff worked with, between departments to put together proposed lots for the site as we move forward with the redevelopment plan, which also allowed us to start discussing the site with developers for quick work on the site. Following the acquisition, environmental analysis of the site to begin, again, we'll go through this as a, as an update to those who are in the room for the first time. But environmental analysis of the site found several contaminants at several different locations on the site and the depth of groundwater ranging between 10 and 1/2 to 15 and 1/2 feet below ground surface, which does have implications on our redevelopment plan moving forward. So again, included in our application is a full scope of our environmental analysis, including all of the site monitoring wells and locations, previous uses of the site that have contributed to the environmental contamination on the site. And then if you move forward, the locations of heavy toxic metals on the site, several areas on the next slide, additional aromatic hydrocarbons in the ground soil found on the site, and then the groundwater contamination that we need to be mindful of when redeveloping the site. So within our analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives, we essentially have three options to move forward. One, we can do nothing. We can leave the site as is at no cost, but then no benefit to the residents other than leaving the blank canvas at hand. Our second option would be to excavate all impacted soils for off-site licensed landfill disposal and import clean backfill, essentially remove everything, put clean soil in. It's estimated the cost of that process would be about $6.5 million. We have about $5.2 million to remove all the contaminated soil, and then another 1.2 then to replace that contaminated soil with clean soil from somewhere else. Our third option is to remove in landfill all of the impacted materials required to facilitate construction and install compliant capping. It's estimated to, in the, in our narrative and proposal, that that would cost about just under $4 million, which is fitting with the grant. An implementation schedule about a year to a year and a half to work through if the development is lined up appropriately. And all of the grant awards would be spent on the excavation and disposal of contaminated soils, topsoil or other capping materials and other film materials. So apologies using a sidewalk or road base as your, your capping material in preparation for, excuse me, your full road. So as we discussed last week, the everything that is hatched in this map on our cleanup overlay would be what we're proposing for, for cleanup and redevelopment. A portion of proposed Lot 1, all of proposed Lot 2 to facilitate the residential development, and then the right-of-way reconstruction between Union and Strong's, and then College Court to the Union-Strong's reconnection. So our redevelopment and revitalization plan, as mentioned in the narrative, has three, three main components. One, reconnection of the road network is a pretty crucial element to our transportation elements of our comprehensive plan, and several of the elements drafted in the conceptual site plan. An enhancement to the downtown Transit Center, you'll notice in our narrative that that is relocated to proposed Lot 1 in order to facilitate adequate cleanup, and then also to be mindful of the depth to groundwater. If we are to work with a developer and to utilize underground parking for the future, it would be most advantageous for us to utilize the space at proposed Lot 3 or Outlot 1 to ensure that we have adequate space for underground parking. And then the third, third component of the revitalization plan is the 75-unit affordable housing redevelopment, which has awarded, been awarded low-income housing tax credits and would provide apartments at multiple rates. Again, so those, those tax credits secure residential units to residents at 30%, 50%, and 60% the area median income, as well as market rate units. So there is a diversity of income levels that would be available, that those housing units would be available to. So before we show the plan that is listed within our program narrative, I just wanted to ensure that everyone is at, been aware of our adopted conceptual master plan. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some small changes with the relocation of the Transit Center into that proposed Lot 1, which does fit on majority of the Shopko building parcel itself and the parking lot parcel into the north. Other than that, there are no major changes. The building that has been in discussion or starting to be designed at proposed Lot 2 does show up a little bit short on that southwest corner, but that does allow for more redevelopment space in, into the future. Our remedial action plan is essentially eight tasks, and this is not in chronological order necessarily. There would be additional site sampling performed to make sure that we are being compliant and removing contaminated soils and treating them effectively. Again, the three crucial elements of the revitalization plan, so the potential transit center, residential building, and then the right-of-way work, as a, as an eligible cost to be working with a developer and to design an adequate system to ensure that there is no further environmental contamination that residents are subject to. That is not go towards the system itself. It is assistance with the design only. There are additional state resources that the developer could use in order to pay for that system. Lastly, program management reporting, all of the fun stuff at the end. So those are essentially an overview of our environmental cleanup for the Shopko site as, as drafted in our EPA Brownfield cleanup grant at this point. The grant itself, the grant narrative, and the analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives are available, and we do hope that we have some additional feedback either tonight or in writing over the next few weeks before we hit submit.
Thank you, Chris. And the reason we have the presentation tonight, it's part of the process. Item number seven on your agenda is also part of that process. We'll have a public hearing on the request for applications, so we will get that squared away as well. All right. 7:50 in our presentations, there. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Item number six for the consent agenda, it's my understanding that Alderperson Steinmetz would like to pull J10.
That's correct.
The minutes and actions of the Finance Committee, specifically the approval of the 2026 capital project funding for the Fire Department Training Center. Is that, that's correct?
That is correct.
I would entertain a motion to approve everything else if that's your wish.
I'd move.
Thank you.
Second.
We'll give the second tomorrow. Discussion. Comments from the audience. Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Keem, knee bone, sorry.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Farrell.
Aye.
And that is approved. Back to item J10, the approval of the 2026 capital project funding for the Fire Department Training Center. Does anybody need a refresher on what that item is? Alderperson Steinmetz, floor is yours.
I think it's important that we support the Fire Department, especially as we build
I think it's important that we support the fire department, especially as we build that muscle memory and make sure that they have the ability to execute their job safely and efficiently. And I also think it's important that we get clear on expectations and our intention when it comes to the support, especially regarding this new facility and the $960,000. With the potential of that building cost changing, whether because we cut things out to just focus on the necessities, or the costs of labor and construction materials going up, I think it would be wise to put a percentage cap on it. So like 33 1/3% up to $960,000, or something to that effect.
Is that a motion, Alderperson?
It is a motion.
So the motion is to approve funding for the training facility equal to 33.33% of the overall project cost, not to exceed $960,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Chief, I see you standing in the back. Step to the lectern, please.
As we discussed last week, we are looking at the needs versus the wants for that facility. And doing the math on that 33.3%, we did look at the facility and what we're looking to potentially cut. I don't know if 33.3% would be where or what we did the math on earlier tonight. When you look at that $960,000 versus roughly about 2.5, 2.6 million, and then the cost increase of about, they're estimating 5% to 7% this year, and another, I don't have this part reduced to memory. I apologize. I got to read. 3% to 5% next year. So if you look at that 6% on average for this year, 4% for next year, a 10% increase. When we did the math at $960,000, at what we would realistically be looking at for a facility in the future, it came out to about 38% would equal the $960,000. But again, I just want to make sure that I'm showing the actual numbers here. If the common council agrees to that $960,000 or that 33.3%, I understand where we're at. I just want to make sure that the numbers that we're showing are the exact percentages and the exact numbers.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief before we allow him to go back? Okay. Thanks, Chief. Thoughts? Comments? Alder Guthrie?
I've been thinking a lot about this facility, and I find it to be not more pressing than other capital needs that we've all been discussing for the last weeks and months. Toxin mitigation, streets and sidewalks, a city hall, an eastern fire station to maintain response time. It's unclear to me how we would pay to operate it once it's built. I haven't seen revenue projections or draft documents outlining how other municipality teams who train there will contribute to operational costs. We're under-maintaining the old buildings and infrastructure that the city already operates. Leaky roofs, flooded basements, plow trucks parked outside, multiple staff to a single human office. We have no budget to increase staff to process permits in a timely fashion or update home valuations in a timely fashion, right? This building would need to be maintained. I commend the fire chief. His staff are training more and working hard to be ready to serve this community. But I don't understand this community to be able to afford a classroom and simulation infrastructure that he's requesting when there are alternatives to train safely and to be ready. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a point of clarification. And Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard from Maria at staff that we are now up to date on permits, or at least within a week or so.
Yes, we are up to date within a week or so. We have entered this slow period. So we've entered, you know, our busy building season as we approach the year. So if we have anything, we catch up this year.
I just wanted to point that out because a couple of meetings ago, that was a point of significant discussion. Alderperson Niebon.
This would be a capital expenses, I understand, correct, to build the building?
Yes.
Okay. There are a lot of needs. There is no doubt about that. Police department needs a garage. Parking rec needs a garage. Streets, I'm sure, could use more space. The training the fire department does, and the training that they can assist with the police department saves lives. And I don't know how you put a price tag on that. In my mind, that's something I'm willing to pay for. Because when I make that 911 call, I want to know that that response is going to come ready to roll, and it's going to take care of me in whatever situation that is. Public safety in my mind is our number one thing that we can do for this community. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got one last thing.
So I know there was a lot of discussion on what this facility actually would be for, and where it was going to be located, and what we would be using it for, and what was the future planning for the facility. Again, our training site is located at 3100 Whiting Avenue. For those of you who haven't had the opportunity to be there boots on the ground, believe me, if you want to be there, come on, come on along, ask the questions. I'll take you down. I'll show you everything. We've just finished our three-story burn facility to be able to create live fire and take our new employees through there. But that's part of this. This is the institutional knowledge that this department doesn't have currently. 23 of the 46 members of our department have less than 2 1/2 years on the job. Majority of them are not comfortable and have not seen a lot of live fire. We continue to train, but we have to train like we're going to perform or play when those 911 calls come in, and we're proficient in creating that muscle memory as we move forward. Now, how often will this facility be used? I know that's been asked as well. I can stand up here in front of all of you and say that that facility, if built, will be used three to four times a week minimum. We train five days a week, Monday through Friday, and some weekends. We also would be able to then facilitate climate-controlled training. We would be able to have a state-of-the-art classroom. We would be able to have a simulation lab for EMS, which we currently don't have, don't have the ability to send our people to and train on outside of the area, or without going outside of the area. Midstate Technical College has been a gracious supporter and a partner, along with DCI, the Department of Criminal Investigation, in helping us thus far through this process. We train while on duty, so if our members have to catch a call and go out on a call, they go out. Division Chief Ewing is actually in the back of the classroom. He's our division chief of training. He coordinates all the training for the year. And he tracks everyone's individual training records and making sure that they maintain their proficiencies from start to finish. So again, just like every other department head in the city and everyone else, you know, they all have their needs. They all have the things that would make their department move to that next step and move forward, and I don't disagree with that. I'm here as the fire chief promoting this training center to move our department forward and to also bring other things to the community, like we talked about with hot classes, other conferences, and have that facility available to do those things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. I also want to point out and remind the Alderpersons and the general public that this does not cover the cost of the facility. This is the city stepping up first for the commitment, in this case to the 33%, 33 1/3%, allowing the chief to find sponsors and raise the other 2/3 of that money through private donations. So this is just kind of that first stepping stone or foundation, if you will, of the total cost of that project. The motion before you is to fund 33 1/3% of the overall project cost up to $960,000. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to that motion, you will vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Marle.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
No.
Christensen.
Aye.
And by majority consent, that is approved. Item number seven is a public hearing. You find that on page 50 of your packet. Public hearing on the application from the city of Stevens Point to the Environmental Protection Agency for a 2025 EPA brownfield cleanup grant for remediation of the select contamination at and around 1200 Main Street with parcels identified in your packet, the presentation that you were just shown. Does anybody need anything clarified before we open the public hearing?
Nope.
All right. Then I will declare that public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer a testimony, step to the lectern and provide that testimony. Seeing no one wishing to testify, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Chris, did you need action on this?
No, I don't need any action necessarily.
Okay.
The public hearing is open and available to residents, and if there's no comments, we'll take comments typically until the closure.
Okay. And the closure date is when?
November 14.
So we will take comments, for those of you who couldn't hear. We will take comments via email or phone until November 14, which is the application deadline. Hopefully, we'll hear more about that in the near future, when we're awarded the grant. Item number eight is on page 101, and that's an ordinance amendment, a request from the city of Stevens Point to amend section 23.02 sub 4 sub D. The zoning ordinance or the revised municipal code of the city of Stevens Point said request amends wireless communication tower ordinances to achieve compliance with Wisconsin State statutes 66.0404. Logan, are you in the overflow room?
Yes.
Does anybody need any clarification on this, or was it explained well enough in your packet? Then a motion would be in order.
Move approval.
I'm sorry, who was it? Lang? Moved by Lang.
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Keimer. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Marle.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is on page 112 of your packet, a resolution authorizing an application for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant Program on behalf of the city of Stevens Point. Trevor, you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Just real quickly, this is really cool and exciting. Thanks, staff and public officials for kind of trying to move this forward, for breaking mortar folks downtown and such. You know, it's nimble, strategic, and, you know, I think there's, you know, good opportunity here, so I'm really glad this is on the agenda. Looking back, and I think it was presented tonight too, with the current plans of those buildings, for this grant, I'm just hoping and kind of requesting that reconsideration of the underground parking. If we're going to truly talk about affordable housing, for the construction cost of an underground parking garage as part of a building, that is a lot of money. We're talking 10, 20-plus million dollars. So if we really want to talk affordable housing, I don't think it's going to fly to have underground parking for that type of, you know, those units. So I just wanted to put that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add? I saw you walking up here.
It was just going to be a short reminder that for the resolution for, I believe this was the Community Development Investment Grant for the Oaks, not necessarily the project that was referenced that Trevor's referring to. Am I correct in that?
This says 1200 Main Street.
All right. My apologies. Never mind. I have nothing to add.
All right.
I have the Oaks.
Yeah, this is on 112.
Yeah, page 112.
We're on eight.
The agenda item, yeah, was it listed incorrectly in the agenda?
Yes.
Because that's going to create an issue. I have it listed as 1200 Main Street in the agenda. Are the parcel numbers correct? What are the parcel numbers?
Resolution just says the Oaks Affordable Housing Project.
It does have a parcel number in there?
No, but it does refer to the former Kmart shopping center property.
Right. But if it was listed incorrectly in the agenda, that didn't provide the public adequate notice on what we're discussing.
Agreed.
So we will have to do it again. Let me just look at this. 112. See, I didn't even look at the actual information there because we talked about this.
The agenda doesn't refer to any specific property.
No, dude.
Number nine.
Number seven.
We're on number nine.
Did I read the wrong one? I am so sorry. That is totally on me. My bad. Sorry for the confusion. Chris, you are exactly right. Trevor, you and I were mistaken on this. This is not, I repeat, this is not for the Shopko site. My bad. I was looking at where I had, never mind. It's totally on me.
I was just going to remind this body, for this resolution, we had previously signed a resolution for a idle sites rehabilitation grant for this site. The WEDC wanted to reconsider the funding source for the project, and so there is an updated resolution to be approved in order for them to proceed with state resources. That's all.
Thank you. And once again, I apologize. I just forgot to cross that item number off, and I looked at the first one that wasn't crossed off, and my fault. So, the resolution authorizing the application for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's Community Development Investment Grant Program on behalf of the city of Stevens Point, not for the Shopko site. We do have a motion in a second?
We do not.
We do not have a motion?
I will move approval.
Moved by Keimer, seconded by Christensen. Discussion there.
We got there.
It's all on me. Okay? Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boozy.
Aye.
Marle.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the Downtown Business Improvement District 2025 Operating Plan and the 2024 Special Assessment Levy. Corey, did you want to talk about any of this? It was pretty spelled out. Most of this is handled through the bid board. Alderperson Christensen, I know you attend those. Maybe you want to give a summary? It's really just the operating plan and the budget. Chris?
I can touch base on the operating plan and budget.
There's a lot of people involved.
Yep. There's been a lot of hands working with the Downtown Business Improvement District to ensure that their operating plan stays as up to date as possible to serve the downtown itself. Included in the plan is a summary of the previous operating plans and some of the changes for the upcoming 2025 operating plan, which does bring to light the hiring and onboarding of special events and marketing coordinators, promoting and installing public space enhancement projects. The 2024 operating plan called for town hall to facilitate or direct the public space enhancement program, as well as the vacant spaces program, which Chloe did a fantastic job coordinating, and now we have some direction for those programs. Thanks to direction and guidance support from the state, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, there are some changes and updates for some of the goals for developing volunteer engagement strategies to enhance the capacity of the Business Improvement District. Really fantastic to see the Board of Directors for the Business Improvement District and the Stevens Point Alliance working hand in hand to ensure good implementation of the operating plan. There is one update and change that will need to be made following because of the way that manufacturing, our assessment of manufacturing properties is handled through the state. So in the 2025 budgeted income, there is an estimated $69,699.68. One assessment
Seven thousand, $70,791.38?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Chris or a motion?
I would move approval of the operating plan.
Thank you. And the assessment levy?
The assessment levy of seventy-five cents per one thousand assessed value.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by Lang. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
That is approved. Item number eleven is a public hearing relating to the petitioning of the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid. Director Lemke, want to give us a recap?
Sure, so, public hearing followed by resolution, and this is a every five to whatever, in this case, we're dealing with eight, seven or eight years, five to eight years process, where we petition the state and federal resources for money for airport projects. They're listed there in very vague detail. It mostly has to do with the crosswind runway, improving lighting, taxiway lighting, hangar area improvements, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Public hearing for public comment, and then the resolution authorizes us to sign the agreement with the Bureau.
And that'll be the next item.
Yeah.
Okay, I will declare the public hearing open. If anyone has testimony on this item, please step forward and provide that. Public hearing remains open. For the third and final time, the public hearing is open. Seeing and hearing no one wishing to offer testimony, we will declare the public hearing closed. Move on to item number twelve, which is a resolution to the effect of petitioning the Secretary of Transportation for Airport Improvement Aid.
I'll move to approve that.
Moved by Niebon.
Second.
I'm sorry, seconded by Steinmetz. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Just for the record, Director, former Director Konoski probably would have checked out by now. Appreciate you staying. I'm teasing. Item number thirteen is an ordinance amendment, chapter thirty, section thirty point zero-one sub-four, as it relates to building code, on page one fifty-nine of your packet. This comes from, what's his title again? He used to be building superintendent. Chief Building Inspector.
Chief Building Official.
Official. Chief Building Official Amarnik. Thoughts, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Just a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Broderick. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Can we get a roll call, please?
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number fourteen begins on page one sixty-one of your packet, and that's a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $16,160,000 in general obligation promissory notes, series 2024A, and all related details. Corey, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. So this is, as we discussed at finance, so we're looking at borrowing a little bit over $16 million, and basically for three primary purposes. One would be our general capital projects throughout the year, and then the second purpose would be the Badger Avenue extension in Tiff District Nine on the east side, and then the third purpose would be the construction of the subdivision that's currently going on on the east side as well. So that's sort of those two additional projects is what pushed up that amount, you know, so high. Sixteen million is a little bit higher than what we would typically borrow in an average year, and Greg Johnson from Ellers is also on the line. Greg, I don't know if you have anything to add as well?
I think the only thing I'll add is that via the parameters resolution, the common council is directing authority to either the mayor or comptroller to accept the sale results as long as certain financial parameters are met. Those were specified in our pre-sale report, namely, the borrowing amount cannot exceed the amount that's in the resolution, and then the true interest cost cannot exceed 3.527%. So as long as those financial parameters are met on the day of sale, the sale will be awarded by signature of the mayor or the comptroller, and we will provide a summary report of those results to staff and the council.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
Seconded was Lang. I hear the voice, and then I got to look to make sure. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
Actually, I just have a quick question. The interest rate, is that a pretty good interest rate at this point?
Yeah, I think so, and, you know, usually with a parameters resolution, we go a little bit higher just in case interest rates move between the time that we adopt the resolution and the time of the actual sale. The other thing to keep in mind is that the sale will be after election day, so that's another kind of variable that we have in between adopting this resolution and the actual sale. I don't know if Greg has any comments on that as well?
No, it's a good summary, Corey. We did build in kind of a cushion in case there is some upward movement of rates based on what we're seeing in the market now, so we have kind of built that in as we typically do for a parameters resolution, but, you know, the rates, again, can't come in any worse than what was shown in our report, otherwise the sale cannot be awarded.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? And if you're in favor of the motion, you'll vote yes, opposed, no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. On page one ninety-six, you will find the 2025 proposed capital budget. Item number fifteen is approval of that capital budget. Corey, anything you wanted to add?
This is, as we discussed at finance as well, so we did include the extra $50,000 for the facility study that was approved by finance. So the total amount is $9,289,250 as far as our general capital budget, and then plus we have capital that's funded by other sources, mainly Tiff districts or utility funds, that's
What are your wishes?
I will move approval of the 2025 capital budget as presented.
Thank you. Moved by Keemer.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. The 2025 capital budget is approved. Item number sixteen is a resolution authorizing the city of Stevens Point to apply for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Small Business Development Grant for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Rourke?
From Rourke 601 Washington, just wanted to share my support. This is a really cool idea and strategy, so thanks for moving this forward.
Love you.
Love you, too.
Thanks. Lots of love over here, lots of love.
Alder Persons, what are your wishes?
I'd move approval.
Moved by Lang?
Second.
We're going to give the second to Shuda.
Great.
Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Director Kivala, we don't have any fun at any of our meetings. Just wanted you to know that. All right, item number seventeen is the elected official salary. As I mentioned, that personnel, we have to, by state statute, set the salaries of the elected positions before the election actually begins. I believe December first, Carrie, is the first time they can take out papers.
Correct.
And they have to be turned in the first Monday.
First Tuesday in January.
First Tuesday in January, and that is for all of the elected, so the electeds, being city attorney, city clerk, and city comptroller, treasurer. Next item, we also have several alder positions, all of the odd-numbered alders are up in spring as well. So we need to set that salary for all of those before the election cycle starts, and before you is what the Personnel Committee recommended for the elected official salaries for the term beginning 2025, ending 2029. What are your wishes?
Move approval.
We're going to give the motion to Broderick, seconded by Niebon?
Sure.
All right, discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, can you please call that roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Boosie.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eighteen is consideration of setting the alder person's salary for the terms beginning in 2025 and 2026. Keemer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a suggestion or an alternative proposal, and if council isn't comfortable with moving forward on this this year, I ask that perhaps it be considered next year. What I think would be helpful before we move forward is to do a comparative salary study with the alder persons the way we did for the other elected officials, for comptroller, clerk, and attorney, with either those same cities or with the cities that were used in the Baker-Tilly study. I did reach out to Clerk Yenter to ask when was the last time that this salary was changed, and I believe it was 2016, and I asked her to share that with all of you, and I don't know if any of you've used an inflation calculator, but that has changed quite a bit. If the council is more comfortable with moving forward with the current proposal, I don't have a problem with that, but I do think sooner or later, the wage will need to be adjusted, and before we do, I think it would be helpful to kind of see how comparative communities have dealt with this issue. So I'd make a motion to postpone changing this until next month, and if we could have a comparison to Personnel Committee with the same cities, then allow Personnel Committee next month to make a suggestion.
So we could do that. However, we have found, when I looked into it, that the alder person's salaries vary widely, and I'm just going to say, I don't know that it has a whole lot of bearing in actual hours spent doing the job. Some pay less, some pay more, and there didn't seem to be a rhyme or reason, other than the full-time alders.
True.
There are some cities that are larger than us that have full-time alder persons that garner a full-time salary. These are part-time positions, and it does vary widely. We can certainly do that. Corey, I mean, we're only talking, we're not talking a significant amount of money, but that would, that would change things for our operational budget presentation if we don't know yet.
Yeah, it would change things a little bit for the operating budget, just that we'd have sort of a wild card out there in terms of an unknown, but I think with the alder persons, you know, we only have six that would be up in 2025 anyway, and then there's only eight months out of the twelve that the new salary would go into effect, so I think it would be something that we can handle. I don't like to have a lot, you know, some big loose ends out there, but this would be a pretty small loose end to have sort of unresolved for budget, so.
All right, fair enough. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone action with the request that staff use our comparables and provide some information next month at Personnel and then comparables and provide some information next month at, well, Personnel and then Common Council. Alder Guthrie?
I have a clarifying question. Is there essentially a deadline for folks?
Yes, December 1st.
December 1st, okay. So if it goes to Personnel in the month of November and then to Finance, okay?
As long as there is action in November. If there is no action or postponed further, the salaries will remain as is. If, if no action is taken, no, I take that back. That is incorrect, because the salaries are set for the term. The city attorney can jump in if he wants, but I believe because the salaries are set for the term, there would be no salary for the alders for the upcoming term.
So it sounds like we could do some investigation. Personnel Committee could take it.
I think we'll be fine.
Personnel Committee could take it up, but then we could always fall back on, if we want to have more thorough conversation, we could always fall back on what's been proposed, the 3% perhaps. Absolutely. Move that forward if we can't come to consensus about a different model in a timely fashion.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, that, that should be fine. Yes, sir?
I got Alder Guthrie's idea from the, from last week, because going with cities that are the same, that are the same size, I mean, as, as the mayor said, really doesn't compare, because other cities have different social, economic facts that we don't have, so the size really does not matter. So if you're in a higher-end city or a lower-end city, it doesn't really matter what size you are, really. And this would be coming out of our budget anyway. So it doesn't really, so I think the idea is really, it sounds like it's not going to cost the city any more money than what, than what it already does, really.
Thank you. Alder Christiansen?
Thinking back to the presentation by Alder Shore, was it last year or the year before, it was going, when, the study, he didn't, I don't remember the peer group that he chose, but that ended up being about a 12% increase, as I recall. So I don't know if, Mayor, do you remember how he chose his peer group?
I, I don't. Again, I can't speak for the alder. I can tell you that when I had looked into it previously, that there was such that, a wide variance.
It was, yeah.
That really didn't have a basis. But it, I mean, it's, it's not going to hurt anything.
No.
To gather the data, I just hope it doesn't add to the confusion.
I guess I would also ask if, if they could give both an average and a median, because sometimes, especially if you have a real wide-ranging.
Well, what if we just give you actual data?
Okay.
Like we did with the comptroller treasurer, just, we'll list the city, here's what the salary is.
But you also gave an average.
Yeah.
Right. So in addition to the average, if you could just kind of find the median out of that too. So if there is an outlier, it doesn't throw things all kitty-wampus.
Kitty-wampus. I like it. All right, sure. So the motion before you is to postpone action and direct staff to provide more data, including salaries of our, our peer cities, as far as alderperson salaries, and we'll try and gather as much data as we can.
Thank you.
And get that submitted to Personnel for next month, if that's the way you choose. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll vote yes, and oppose, no, but before we do that, I need to go to the audience for comments, because I forgot to do it, just in case. All right. Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll. Christiansen?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Boozy?
Aye.
Morrow?
No.
And that is approved. Item number 19 is on page 209 of your packet, request to amend the City Administrative Policy 3.06 for holidays, if you recall. We talked about this at Personnel, adding four federally-recognized holidays, that being Juneteenth, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, and what was the other one that I was forgetting?
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Day, thank you. And again, this just puts us in, in line. We include in the packet all of the comments that you got from your department heads that was requested. I think there was a pretty obvious message there, and also Corey had provided some financial numbers that were emailed out this afternoon. If you didn't check your email, you may not have gotten those. Does anybody need a recap of those financial implications? They're less than $5,000.
I would take a recap. I haven't seen that email.
Corey, you want to come up?
Sure. So there's basically two different ways to look at this. You can look at the hard costs with the money that's actually leaving the city, you know, due to this change. And with that, the main hard cost that we found is if there would be a snow event during a holiday that, you know, we didn't have off before, that now we have off, we'd have to call people in for that. The expense of that is about $5,000, so, and that would just happen if there was a snow event on one of these holidays. And then, you know, I was also asked to look at some soft costs as far as, you know, you also have a, arguably a lost productivity that you have for fewer days, you know, in the office or on the job. And as far as the total number of days, I'm showing that, you know, if I, I take the total amount of workdays, I take off the current holidays, you know, an average for vacation time, an average for sick time, coming up with remaining 231 workdays, four additional holidays would, would basically take, you know, four off of that to bring that down to 227 remaining workdays. So that's a lost productivity of about 1.73%. So as, as far as what the impact of that, those four days would be.
Corey, how many total staff do we have?
We have a total of about 220 staff, but you also have to remember that, you know, we also.
Those FTEs or, or actual?
Well, that's, full-time employees is about 220.
Okay.
Yep. So, and, but we also have police and fire that operate a little bit differently, where they're under union contracts, they have separate holiday policies, so that's going to carve out, you know, I want to say 80-some people from this, so. So, so you're, you're left with, you know, doing this off the top of my head, you know, about 140, 135.
Any questions for the comptroller? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
Move approval of the additional four holidays.
That is correct.
As presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebohn. Discussion there? We'll go to Guthrie, and then it looked like Christiansen was about to say something.
So the Personnel Committee unanimously denied the proposal that's before the full council tonight, just last week. The proposal is to add federal holidays as paid time off, not in exchange for non-federal holidays like day after Thanksgiving or Good Friday that are currently on the municipality's paid holiday schedule. But in addition to, my analysis of this is that the policy would result in municipal staff having more paid holidays than both state of Wisconsin and federal employees because of those days that are not federal or state holidays that are already on the schedule, and then adding the newly-recognized federal holidays. I, I welcome a counter to that in a moment if you understand it differently. So I'll be voting no and welcome the conversation being returned to the Personnel Committee for future conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Christiansen and then Keemer.
First off, I will be recusing myself from this for, for a vote, because my wife is an employee, so I won't be voting on it. My concern is, is the amount of days lost is basically equivalent to about three staff 1.7% times 220 employees, that's considerable. And I'm not sure that, that we have that much extra time available. I, I understand the, the concept, and, and I think maybe giving one additional one, theoretically, I, I could have been supportive, but I, I think four all at once, that's, that's a significant amount of production to take out of an organization in one fell swoop. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Alder Keemer?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I am neutral on adding the four holidays, like Alder Christiansen. I'm open to adding perhaps one, in, specifically in reference to the days after Thanksgiving and, and so forth. I do see that as beneficial to city and county staff. I was a city and county employee for over a decade when I first started my career, and as a new person in, you know, the hierarchy, those vacation days were very quickly taken by people with 20, 30-year seniority over me, and I worked the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas for many, many years, which is, you know, okay if your family lives close by, but my family was eight hours away. So I think giving staff the ability to have a long weekend on those, like, very common, universally, you know, for the most part, holidays that are celebrated pretty widely in our community and in our state, is helpful. I do agree that this is a lot of holidays. I would have loved to have 15 holidays when I was a city employee. We did not. Again, I'm open to adding one, but I, I do see that 14 holidays is quite a bit, especially with the increases in vacation time that we have given. But I do think it is important to kind of maintain the holidays that staff already have now. They've already planned their vacations, they have expectations of how they're going to spend their time, and I wouldn't want to be seen as taking something away from them. I think that would be very difficult for morale, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Comments?
Alder Broderick?
In terms of the Personnel Committee last week, I, I personally voted against this because I wanted to give us the opportunity to explore what implementing floating holidays could look like. I personally did not have an objection to adding additional holidays, just wanted to see if there would be value in reorganizing how we're assigning those. And at the end of the day, I, I do still think it is a fabulous idea, but logistically and from all of our city staff who would be affected by this, we heard very resoundingly that they do not want to implement that. So ultimately, it's just a question of if this is too many holidays, and, and I, I personally feel and have seen in my own day job that people work better when they have good morale on their team, people work better when they have time to recharge and connect with their families. So I would hesitate to say that productivity would even be lost when you look at the value of giving people a better work-life balance, so I will be supportive.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I was a city employee as well, but it was the city of Dallas, Texas, so I don't remember what days we got off, but they were never enough. I think at the very least, we should add ML King Day and Juneteenth because of the significance that those holidays represent. I would like to see Columbus Day changed, the name of that changed, but until that happens, because that's also a sadly significant day for our Native American folks that live From the perspective of somebody who works hard, and when I worked for a city, a couple extra holidays really means a lot. Gives you something to look forward to, a little bit extra. I, I would rather give them the option to take, like, Veterans Day or the day after Thanksgiving, because I know that's, that's a really important holiday. I would like people to have that option, or at least change it up to allow that, maybe take away Veterans Day as a paid holiday.
Veterans Day is not a paid holiday right now.
Okay. So, and I would then, I would rather have folks have the day after Thanksgiving off than perhaps Veterans Day. And as a veteran, I can say that, I'd rather have the day off after Thanksgiving too as a city employee, because it does give you that opportunity to have a long weekend with one of the holidays that's really geared toward family and people gathering together. I think more so than Veterans Day even, so I would like to see that switch, but in the end, I think I'm in favor of giving folks more holidays. Goodness knows, they work hard.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side?
I've got one more.
Just looking at you.
Sure. Go ahead.
It seems like the more we discuss this in Personnel Committee, the more questions we had. I do think the feedback that we received was valuable, and that there are positive externalities to adding more time off in terms of productivity, work-life balance. I'm struggling to grapple with that big of a jump. I think adding four days, that's a, that's a big change. I would be more open to weaning into this, like, maybe we try out a day or two if things are trending upward somehow by taking more time off, if that productivity impact is greater than the lost time, let's do it again. Let's keep doing it until we don't see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone on this side?
So I just want to recap for what the motion is. The motion is still for what we have in our packet.
Correct. Adding the four additional holidays. Anyone on this side?
I guess I'd just like to say, I mean, again, thanks for the staff feedback. It was beneficial to see what was talked about in Personnel to kind of just having that discussion, bringing it up as an idea, but getting the, the feedback directly from, it looks like there was a lot of staff input asking questions there. And I guess I would kind of echo the sentiment as well, you know, a 30% increase in holidays being talked about just off the bat. I, I'm still kind of neutral or wrestling with the, the prospect of that, but would want to explore it potentially. So I, 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 again, kind of just, just liked the, the feedback we received from the discussion that was had, but I think we have kind of a direction, potentially some more to talk about with, you know, what the, the motion would officially clear.
Anyone else on this side? For the first time? Okay, move back. Alder Guthrie?
I wanted to add that I am not disagreeable to any of the language that was cleaned up, we'll say, in the, the policy by, by staff. And so while there might be some significant different directions to go or things to discuss in terms of which paid holidays we include in the policy, I, I would just pose that I don't have any disagreement to the cleaned-up language that's outlined in the draft that's in our agenda, and so perhaps this is an opportunity tonight to move forward, at least on that, while we continue to discuss how big of a jump and how quickly to take.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Now, I'm going to recap the, the thought process behind this. Years ago, we had two floating holidays as part of the city policy. Almost everybody took the day after Thanksgiving off. This was several years ago already. So we decided that floating holidays, as you saw in your comments from all of the directors, are challenging to schedule. So we made a decision as a body, the Common Council, to provide the day after Thanksgiving as one of those days and add, this is a day of vacation. So that's where those two original floating holidays worked. As you saw from the directors' comments, floating holidays are not preferred. We looked at Juneteenth. Administratively, the mayor's office has the authority to close City Hall, and in recognition of Juneteenth this year, we did just that. The process then was to go forward and get that officially codified by council. When Human Resources Manager Frash looked into it, she realized that not only was Juneteenth a federal holiday, but something we didn't recognize, but there were several others. So that began the process of, of adding these holidays. That's why you see four before you. We could certainly do one, we could do two. Which one's more important, Martin Luther King Day or Veterans Day? Juneteenth or Indigenous Peoples' Day, second Monday in October? We'll call it that. So rather than have to pit holidays against each other, we chose internally to use the four holidays that are federally recognized all at once. Couple of different things. It, it puts us in line with what the federal government does. They may not have day after Thanksgiving off, but we're not asking for that. That's already in our policy. If you want to remove the day after Thanksgiving and replace it with these four, that's, that's an option. This is just a recommendation to add these four. You can still do whatever you want. That's, that's your decision to make as a body, but we thought it in our, at best, to do all four at the same time. Then it does have an effect on morale, like Alder Person Broderick said. We are not the greatest-paying city in the country. We are average, and we spent a lot of money to become average. If we want to attract good people, it's, it's the other benefits that we have to, to look at. A couple of additional holidays to the tune of about $5,000, I think is a relatively small piece to pay. If we took that $5,000 and split it up amongst our 240 employees, one time, it wouldn't add up to a whole lot. But the bottom, that was the logic behind it. The, the motion was shot down at Personnel. My interpretation was that you wanted more feedback. You wanted that input from the directors, and I thought maybe we could get it in a month. The directors were pretty quick, so they turned it around, they got the information to me. I disseminated it via your packets, so you could see all of the directors in their words, what their thoughts were. If you're not ready to make that decision, that's fine, but then we need to know what direction, if any, you want to go on this.
Could I offer, like, a friendly amendment to this? Could we, like, as is, all four of them, but could we change Columbus Day to the second?
We may call it whatever we'd like. We use, we, we thought about this, and Sandy and I had talked about it, because I prefer to call it Indigenous Peoples' Day as well. I've recognized that every single year I've been in office. But the federal government uses the Columbus Day name. That's why we chose that. It, it wasn't an arbitrary decision. If that's what the federal government was using, that's what we were going to use. We can certainly change it to the second Monday in October, or if you'd like, we can certainly call it Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's up to you. But if you would, if you would... Motion and second?
Yes.
We have, does anybody have objection to calling it the second Monday in October?
No.
Then I think we can, we can adjust the language to say it's second Monday in October.
Okay.
So the motion before you is to prove the four extra holidays with Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day being renamed to the second Monday in October.
One more comment.
Sure.
Something you said triggered something I wanted to say, and that's retention of the employees we have by giving a few more holidays. As you said, we, we are not the best-paid city. It's hard to find qualified people these days, and it's hard to keep qualified people. If a couple extra holidays makes the difference, I believe it's a small price to pay, so to keep and attract the kind of people that we want serving the city.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I just want to verify that the motion on the floor is inclusive of the language revisions below the named holidays.
Yes, it is.
Is that what everyone understands?
Yep, as, as presented, so that, that page 214 of your packet and beyond that, those changes that Director HR Manager Frash put in. Just really cleaning up some language. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Is everybody clear on the motion?
Can you please repeat it?
We are adding four days to our standard holiday schedule, 3.06 of the admin policy. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Juneteenth, second Monday in October, and Veterans Day. And the additional language changes that are in your packet. Okay? If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll. Morrow?
No.
Boozy?
No.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
No.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Guthrie?
No.
And Christiansen has abstained.
Uh, looks like five to four?
Yep, five to four.
That passes.
Mm-hmm.
That passes. Our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at 8:49.